All right, call the meeting in order. Fled to Legion.
Fled to Legion. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present.
Okay, is there any public comment? No, okay, no public comment, then we go to the consent agenda. My report for authorization of payroll bills, town fund, general assistance, road, department, and sewer, and then also my report for social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, transportation, and financial. Before I ask for a motion to approve, I will point out again, as I did at the party the other night, that we continue particularly on the social services side to see a significant ramp up in terms of demand across the board in virtually all our, all our social services. As I said, food pantry is over a thousand a month for the first time ever. The employment center, the individuals coming in, the appointments has significantly increased. Walter said his veteran service appointments have increased. GA and EA were at, I wouldn't say, yeah, at record levels. And the youth services, we continue to have a, continue to have a waiting list. And we're, as you know, we're trying to hire a therapist, but it's so hard to, to find one right now, but we're actively looking for a therapist there. So anyway, I just, this is some comments here as you look through those numbers. If I can have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Now let's see approval of the minutes. I'll do both of these together. The March 18, 2024, public hearing on the tentative budget for the town fund, general assistance, sewer, and road department budgets, and the March 18, 2024, regular bill, board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion, any questions on the minutes? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. There are no presentations, so we'll go now to the elected officials' monthly reports, the assessor, the clerk, and the supervisor. Assessor, please.
You have my written report. Other than what was stated there, we're just continuing to take exemption applications. We've sort of worked through and around some of the problems that we've had with the new system, and we are being informed that there is a distinct possibility that second installment tax bills might be out on time this year. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the assessor?
No.
No. All right, clerk's report.
We had two FOIA's this month, one regarding compensation for elected officials and supervisor, sorry, Administrator Piac sent them the resolution with that information. The second FOIA was requesting real estate value notices on two properties, and Administrator Piac let them know the county has not given us information on that yet. Also, the budget and appropriation ordinances for town fund, general assistance, and sewer, and road and bridge have been filed, and that's it.
Okay, any questions for the clerk?
No.
If not, then we'll go to supervisor's report. I want to thank all of you that were able to, for attending the staff appreciation party the other night. I thought it was a very good party, opportunity to get together and spend a little more time with the staff. I think they're very appreciative, not only of the dinner, but also of our presence there and your interaction with them, and your willingness to pay for the drinks. So I want to thank you all for that, and afterwards, I, there was some leftover wine, so I'll bring it in here, and everybody can grab a bottle. On the, on the handouts I put before you, the migrant, there's a piece on migrant, how you care for migrants that show up. There is some concern that during the Democratic Convention this summer, that they, the city will be moving some of the immigrants, migrants, that are in the city, out to the suburbs. There is some concerns about that. If that's the case, we're putting together a plan for being able to handle this in terms of being able to accommodate them on a short-term basis, both potentially for shelter and for food, but then they will be, the transportation will be arranged to put them, bring them back to the, to the, actually, the welcome center in displaying, and then from there back into the city. Any new immigrants coming through here, we also will handle any, any issues in terms of health or any issues in terms of food and feeding, but then they will go to the center and displaying again. We'll provide transportation there. And then on the new one, on the new immigrants, I'm not sure where they go from the displaying center. With the ones that have been shipped, if they're shipped out here, they will go back to Chicago's where they'll go. We'll have more information in terms of a plan, how that's going to be handled, I hope, at the, Corey will present the next, the next meeting. But there is just, at the, at the meeting for the social workers, that was raised as a concern, because there has been some talk about during the summer and the Democratic Convention that it may result in some movement in where the, where the immigrants are, are sent. Okay, on the decennial report, which you're all familiar with, that should be finalized by Dick and the committee, this, between now and the May meeting, and it will be presented at the May meeting. I'm not sure if Dick is gonna, Corey, or if how you're gonna do that, but we'll get the reports out to everyone ahead of time, then Dick will present it and answer any questions. And I, it looks like they did a nice job, it looks like some of those things were already have addressed in some ways too, which is great. Community events, we do on, on May 4th, we're gonna have the free shredding event here at the township. We're doing that in coordination with Elk Grove, with Elk Grove Lions Club. That's May, Saturday, May 4th, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. here. On the 11th of May, we will have a Stamp Out Hunger food drive, bag food will be, will be, will be, bag food donations, and by, by your mailbox and your letter carrier will do the rest of donations, will stay in the community. So we're working with the, to post offices on this, where people are asked to put food, bag food out by their mailbox, and then the letter carrier will pick them up, and then we're also gonna provide some, some food and some, some of our, we're gonna assist them in some ways. On the, on Saturday, May 18th, the Community Character Coalition will be collecting donations for the township's food pantry. That will be at the Jewel Osco on Beasterfield Road, and that, that food will be, is called CCC Pack the Pantry, and that will go to support us. We've put out a list of the things that are most important for us to get, where we need the most help. And then on, on Friday, June 28th, we'll have the Secretary, Secretary of State Mobile Services Unit here, and that will be at the Town Hall. There will be reservations are required for that, that's for real IDs, driver licenses, renewals, duplicate, corrected, state IDs, vehicle registration stickers, and organ and tissue donor, and voter registration with the renewal of the driver's license and the So that's, those are some of the events that are coming up in the near term, the shredding event on the 4th, supporting the post office Stamp Out Hunger on the 11th, the Pack the Pantry at the Jewel Osco on Beasterfield Road on the 18th, and then the Secretary of State Mobile Services Unit here on Friday, June 8th, 28th. When's the community events day?
It's maybe 12:00.
And that is, can you explain a little bit what we have at that?
Sure, it's just, there are a couple of vendors, essentially, as well as cancer screening, we have the passport office, the sheriff's office, as well as some other vendors. We invite community members to screen, which just lasts a couple of hours, it will be approached by program by the sheriff's office. So we just have lines with all of the different vendors and get some services.
Okay. If you remember, we do two community service days a year, spring and fall, and these we have multiple, multiple agencies, vendors here, and like she said, this time, it's the Treasurer's Mobile Unit, the Mobile Screening Unit for the Lions Club, the Sheriff's Office, Lexian Brothers, our, our veteran service officer. And in the fall will be, some will be the same and some will be different. And then the shredding events, we do twice a year as well. The one that's coming up on the 4th is with Elk Grove Village Lions, and the one in the fall is with the Mount Prospect Lions. And then the mobile, mobile ser, the Secretary of State Mobile Services, that we kind of get as we can, and we do that, try to do that at least once a year, if not twice. There's some other programs too, which will be, we also have a day where we do, we provide assistance with wills and powers of attorney for seniors, and there's a, there's a couple other events of, of community-wide service events that we have, but these are the ones that are scheduled right now, and if you want, I have a handout that you can take a look at. The storage, just as under construction, we've, we've got the, the youth programs room slash community room pretty well finished, and the office is pretty well set up, there's a few odds and ends that need to be done there, but it is ready to go, and the bathroom is set up for there as well, too. The outside, the landscaping still needs to be completed, and the fence and gates on the sides need to be still addressed, but otherwise, as the grass comes in and everything, we should be looking pretty good this summer. We're in the process of trying to identify the seasonal bike service director, and we're hoping, and once the landscaping comes in, also the challenge course will start being used by the youth services group, and we hope to have a grand opening this fall. By that point, everything should be, the landscaping should be in, the fences, the, the gates, and we should have had some activity, have used the facility and tweaked any problems, so that when the grand opening this fall comes, it will be for the bike safety, for the challenge course, and for the youth, the youth programs room, and the youth, well, the youth services area there. I would also say that the, the main big storage room back there has now really been kind of cleaned out. Romero now is cutting down that metal cage back there, and, and then he's gonna clean and paint the walls, he's gonna clean, it's power wash and paint the floors, we'll bring some more shelving in, and we'll be using that more extensively for, for food storage and the medical closet storage will go back there as well, too. Up front, we've moved the food pantry, I mean, the medical closet, out of the room up front, that's now being used as sort of a multipurpose unit for therapy as for, and for an employment center. There's a, another room there that we have that now is, we're using for multi-purposes, for the, the immediate stuff that's need for the medical closet and the immediate stuff used for, for other things. Believe it or not, we've only been in here four or five years, we're already getting tight in terms of the, our rooms. Now when we, but when we get a new therapist, because we've moved youth services to the back of the building by their courses and everything, we will have room for the next therapist. When we get beyond that, then it starts, we have to kick Connie out of her office.
There you go.
So that's the, the construction continues to move along very well, and we're, I think the, the end is largely in sight. Once again, I reappreciate Rep. Musman, Representative Musman, for the grant that she arranged for us that helps us particularly with the big storage space for food and for the, the medical closet, because we really needed to get that cleaned up and organized, and that allows us to do that. We started the, with our public, as you know, we have, Mandy is our communications director, and she does the website, she does the newsletters, she does the internal newsletters, and she helps with specific press release and so forth, but we still use Vicarious for a, a press release. We put out a press release something every month, and then she provides consulting services, something dramatic would come up. She's also now doing, because it was part of the contract before that didn't get used, is she's also doing video snippets, so they're short videos that highlight a particular service that we provide, and she just did one on the food pantry, and that will go up on the website and social media?
Yeah.
Website and social media, and we'll do something on one of the services every month, every other month?
Every quarter, then at some point you'll be.
Okay, okay. So I think that's, I think that's, once again, we're, we're trying to make sure that we, what we do and the services we can provide, which are all free with exception of the passport, where there's some requirements that the government, that we're required to charge for, we want to make sure that, that people have every opportunity to learn about these services and are fully aware of what's available for them. And as you've known in the past, you know, we've always been kind of the best form or most impactful form of government that nobody knows about, and we're really trying to change that through a variety of ways, both PR as well as, as well as these service days we're doing, and, and a variety of other things. So, let's see, any, only other thing I wanted to mention was there is some interesting legislation out there, I don't know if you've read in Prospectus, in the Perspective, one of them is the assessor's office where they're, I think, is he representative or Senator McConkey? Is he rep or senator? I'm not sure. Anyway, he's proposed legislation that would allow a township board to decide to do away with the elected assessor position and hire a, an employee instead. And the, the only issue so far with, well, the issue with that so far is one of the concerns is twofold, which Connie could probably address with you, is one, this is not, the township is supposed to be the organization closest to the people, and the representatives are supposed to come from the people. And, and to me, it seems wrong that the board can eliminate an elected position, it should have to be a referendum, such as we do with the, with the, with the, with the road and bridge. Also, the way it's written is if I all of a sudden think, if we all of a sudden think that our, our assessor's not gonna win in the next election, we could do away with the position, elected, and then at the end of that, when we get closer and say, oh, well, she'll win this time, we could put it back. So there's, there's room for political games here, which is never, never good for any, any government organization. There's another one out there, and there's a number of them, but another one where the county board can decide to eliminate a special, special service district, such as a road and, like a road and bridge. That would supersede even us having a referendum like we did to eliminate it. They would, they could pass an ordinance, it would be reviewed by the corp, the controller, and a plan for how they would provide these services going forward, and then if the controller approved it, they just do away with the body, with the special district. I understand a little bit behind that, because it's very hard to eliminate a special district, even one that's not functioning, but on the other hand, it's once again moving in the direction of, once consolidating power and decisions in boards rather than in the people, rather than the, the voters. And that's a little bit disconcerting that we continue to consolidate and centralize power and take it away from the local communities, and that's a concern to me longer term. And then there's another one, and I don't know this often, I wish Corey was here, another one where they're talking about, if you don't spend 51, at least 51% of your GAE/EA budget, then you can't, you can't do a levy the next year. You would have part of the-
They'll lower it.
They'll lower it? I thought they eliminated it, no?
Yeah, but I, I think what happened is when they passed this most recent GEA bill, where they're allowed to use GEA funds for other things, as long as the board agrees to it, they, they integrated this, which I've been passing, but basically it's forcing you to specialize on it by the end of fiscal year, otherwise you lose the opportunity to support it going forward. And that kind of lowers it continuously, because it sounds like you can overspend and get that money.
Yeah.
They were adjusting, they would cut you out.
It reminds me of in the military, where you get your budget for the year, your allocation, and if you didn't spend it, you'd lose it, and you'd get cut back the next year, if I remember right, Brian?
Yes.
So what you would do at the end of the year, let's say if I was First Lieutenant, that means I have the deck division, all the painting of the ship and cleaning of the ship, at the end of the year, I'd just buy a ton of paint, buy a ton of brooms and brushes and all that stuff, so I use up my budget.
Even if you don't need it.
That's right.
Doesn't matter. I spend it.
Government at its best.
You're wasting it, you're gonna use it.
Well, yeah, but I mean, the bottom line is, I didn't need it at that time, but the captain would say, spend your budget, so I'd find ways to spend it. You have the same potential problem here, if I'm under 51% of having spent my budget, I'll just spend it, I'd find a way to spend it, so I don't lose my levy.
There's no, there's no incentive-
Right.
-to not spend.
Right, right, and there should be, there should be an incentive to be, to be, to be, have a fiduciary, take it, take that fiduciary responsibility, be responsible with your, from a fiscal point of view. And this will make it, maybe, maybe townships like us will still be fiscally responsible, but for some townships, it'll be an incentive to spend. So there's, there's always, sometimes I always feel like the legislation is either thrown out there for a, to find a, a, a solution for a problem that doesn't exist, or it goes out there as a reactive, something, for some issue, and then boom, they gotta throw something out and don't think all the way through the consequences. And a lot of that's because a lot of our representatives and senators and so forth are overwhelmed, and the, the work is done for them by someone else on their staff or some outside group that just brings it to them, and, and they don't really fully understand it, but put it forward, because it supposedly sounds good, they don't get their homework done on it. So some of these things need to be addressed up front before they get too far along, so that they can be amended or can be adjusted, or at least our, our opinions can be, can be, can be felt. I did make a call to our, to Musman, Representative Musman and Murphy on the assessors, and I did make a call on the, on the county being able to, through ordinance, eliminate local bodies of government. And they're, they're pretty responsive, but you can tell sometimes that they're just not fully aware of what all the different aspects are, and sometimes it doesn't matter, it still goes through, so. So anyway, you, you, what's interesting here is, you should read, is you read the Perspective, it's in there, the other place to read, you, you all get the MTA emails from Kootburg, and, and if you read through, if you take a look at those, it periodically has ones that lists all the legislation, and just read through that legislation, and it, and sometimes they'll ask for you to submit a witness, what is it called, is that a witness or a?
Witness.
Witness, yeah, the witness statement, which is just basically, it's a standard document, the office, like when I worked on the Hill, you get all these in and you just count them up, how many a, how many nay, and then you give it to the, give it to the congressman or whoever it is, and then you have a standard letter, that if someone voted, said yay, you send them back a letter that makes, looks like you're supporting them, and if you send in something that said nay, you have a standard letter that makes it sound like you're supporting them, so that's how it works.
And then you use the machine to sign it.
And then they use the machine, they use the machine to sign it.
They did that.
Yeah, you're right. But the bottom line, he does, they do see, you know, if there's a preponderance one way or the other, and then a call, some like from supervisor or a mayor or something can sometimes make a difference too. But there is legislation out there that is a little bit disturbing this time. Okay, does anybody have any questions for me? No, if not, can we have a motion to approve the elected officials' reports?
So moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, now we go to Resolution 2020, well, we're in, we're in new business, Resolution 2024, 03 RD, which is Road District, it's a resolution declaring certain township personal property a surplus property. What we're, we're doing here is we're, we're going through the last, I think, the last rendition of, of, of selling off as surplus equipment from the, from the Road District. It's no longer needed, as we now have outsourced the, the snow plowing, and which, by the way, if Mount Prospect annexes the Hamilton area, there will no longer be any other, any unincorporated areas in Mount Prospect, and our IGA with them will be canceled. We'll only have an IGA with Elk Grove, where there are several unincorporated areas still. It also, we also are outsourced our engineering to Croll, and we have a brush pickup group that does, does mowing and brush pickup, all that's outsourced, and then Romero, if something is an emergency or something comes up, he can, he can fill the gap if he needs to, though, though we are limited, once we get rid of this stuff, we are limited in what we ourselves can do, but we, we do have the, the third parties that we should be able to lean on quickly enough. This would be if you, if you, if you look here, Exhibit A will list the New Holland Heister, LW 50 Heister with forks and bucket. We have a forklift now for the food, pallets of food, and for anything else, other higher item, heavier items we need to store on the upper shelves, so that is not needed. We have the F-350 Super Duty XL Truck, which, with a salt dog spreader and a western plow. We hung onto that a little bit, just in case we needed to back up, if we, because we wanted a backup for the plowing, but we found that we just don't need it. And then the parking lot, how are we gonna do our parking lot again?
Well, get somebody from the outside to do it.
Well, we will find another vendor to do our parking lot. Then we got a various street signs, if any of you want to, to get any to put in your driveways or around your house. We've got stop signs and two-way parking sign, or one, no, no parking signs that will, will be at disposal of, and then lots of assorted poles for mounting street signs and the likes. We are keeping some that we may use for the bike safety and some that we may need for some reason or other, but the majority of them we're getting rid of. So, Resolution 2024 03 RD, Resolution declaring certain township property, personal property a surplus property, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion, any questions on that? Paul's here, Izzy's here. You can go more detail than me if you want. Okay, not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, new business, Resolution 2024 04. Debbie is, is retiring. When is the, a specific date?
May 9.
May 9th. She's been here for 21 years, and she was our transportation corp, well, she was our administrative assistant for a long period of time, and then she's been the transportation coordinator of the most recent years. And we've, Rose was hired recently to replace her as the transportation director, and she's working with Rose to kind of get her on board, though Rose has a ton of logistical experience. She, she, she's retiring, so we've got a resolution recognizing her for her service and for her, for her time with the, with the township. This will be presented to her next, next board meeting, she was unable to make it tonight, so what I need is, is a, a motion to approve and a second to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion, anything in this that you've read that you feel is inappropriate or should be added? Nope?
No, it's excellent.
Okay, all right, I probably will go through it again, just from a grammatical or point of view, but it, it shouldn't be any particular, any issue. If we have a motion, I mean, we have motion, a second to approve, we have a roll call, please.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, the last item under new business is the education reimbursement program in agreement that's been revised. Izzy, if you'd like to just explain, it's pretty simple, but.
So the education reimbursement policy is not new to you, you've seen it multiple times. We just clarified a few of those things on there, we have a very eager staff, and so we often get approached about things that are not typically continuing education or college courses, but certifications, seminars, things like that. So we kind of went in there and clarified it, we didn't want it to be an umbrella kind of view. It's clear for both the employee as well as administration and the board, everybody kind of know, knows what to expect, you have to get approval ahead of time, you know what kind of grade you need to get or what the passing score needs to be in order to get reimbursed, and then there's a retention clause in there as well. So everybody's kind of on the same page. There really wasn't many- There really wasn't many changes, we just wanted to make sure we clarified that. We have people who get licensed for professional services such as counseling. It's a little bit pricier, and also it belongs to them and not so much the township. So we wanted to make sure we can clarify that, and we weren't paying for it up front, and then having somebody leave and take it with them. So there's other things such as passport acceptance agents that belongs to the township, they cannot do that outside of these walls, so we would pay for that and they wouldn't. So it's the same thing with notaries and things like that. So most people kind of know what to expect, but this is a guideline for both us and them. Good?
Anybody have any?
It was, it was just to clarify the policy more than anything else.
Anybody have any questions for her?
No.
Thank you. Okay, do I get a motion to approve the revised education reimbursement program and agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? That roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. We had skipped over old business, but there is no old business. And then is there any discussion or comments from the trustees on any, on anything that's going on here, anything goes on? I do wanna, I just mentioned, didn't mention before, but I, Paul and Izzy, particularly Izzy did a great job on putting that party together, and, and I want to thank them for that. I think it's sort of a highlight for the staff for the year, and, and so I fully appreciate it. Okay, is there, and don't, anybody have, have any other comments or any other questions or anything?
No.
Dick, you look like you're gonna say something. No, okay. All right, well then, I, I need a motion to go into closed session under Open Meetings Act II, C1, and Open Meetings Act II, C2, this is regarding employee compensation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll adjourn to go into a closed session, and we'll come back out and, because everything we do has to be in, in open meetings, any actions that we take. All right, can I get a motion to come back into session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going back to the session here, the, following the closed session. And we have two issues, no, it's, we, we need to address the cop, the cop, oh, that's right, roll call.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Nierdowski?
Present.
Trustee Keenly?
Present.
Trustee May?
Present.
Trustee Perns?
Present.
Supervisor Bussie, thanks.
Present. Where's that then?
Yeah.
Okay, we have, we will, I have a, we'll ask for, in a second, we'll ask for a motion to approve compensation for staff members 5%, receiving increases 5% and under, and then for staff members that are receiving compensation in excess of 5%. So do I have a motion to approve the proposed compensation increases that fall within the 0% to 5% range?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, does anybody want to talk specifically about any of these increases? Okay, if not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. Now we have two individuals that are over 5%, where the board needs to approve them specifically. Well, I, so what I, I need to do is to get a motion to approve the compensation increases for these two individuals that would be in excess of 5%.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussions on those individuals? No? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. Okay, yeah, once again, I'll ask, is there any comments or any issues from any of the elected officials that'd like to raise?
No.
Okay, if not, meeting, is it, wait, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I was gonna get you guys out of here.